Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Our business today is to conduct a budget study session. This is our fourth such session, and we hope to only have a few more. But today, we're going to try and go as long as tolerable before we adjourn this one and move on, on another date, to the remaining few budget departments that we're prepared to discuss. Let's take the roll call, please.
Council members Draymond, Friedman, Quintero.
Here.
Weaver, Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Mr. Starburt. And I would like to remind everyone that this, if you're watching this on a replay at some later day, this is a Monday morning that we're conducting this budget session. This is not our regular course of business of meetings on Tuesday, so excuse my colleagues, I know they'll be coming in shortly. Mr. Starburt.
Mr. Mayor, good morning. Yes, this is budget study session number four in our cities, in our series of study sessions to put together the budget for the upcoming year. You only have to read the newspapers or have read newspapers and know that this continues to be quite a trying time for cities and counties and public agencies in the state of California. In that regard, I'd like to take a bit of a step back for just a second and give you a quick update on the lawsuit by the California Redevelopment Association in its attempt to block the state's efforts to take local redevelopment agency funds. Funds that, as you know, we have been the benefit of over the years in prompting both private development and investment in Glendale, but also in completing a number of needed public improvements, everything from streets to parks to libraries. Well, in this year's budget, the state attempted to take $11 million from Glendale, $2 billion statewide from redevelopment agencies. And the California Redevelopment Association, which represents most of the redevelopment agencies in the state of California, filed a lawsuit claiming the take was unconstitutional. This last week, we received the result of the litigation with the court citing with the state in what I think was a rather tortured decision to get to the point that the judge justified the take. As a result, the payment to the state from Glendale of $11 million is due by 5 o'clock today. And as a result, we will send a check down to the county of $11 million, which purportedly, as the legislation is written, will go to benefit schools, but it really won't go to benefit schools because with the one hand, the state directs our money to support local schools, then with the other hand, takes the same amount of money out of the schools' funding from the state. So in effect, the schools are not benefited. Had they been benefited in a net way, then maybe there might have been some way to feel good about this take, but in the end, it doesn't benefit schools and instead goes to backfill the black hole of fiscal despair that we see at the state of California. My concern is, on a going-forward basis, although we have the funds, have saved them up and set them aside to make this payment this week, my fear is that the state's fiscal problems continue to grow. They get worse almost with every report that we hear. And in the upcoming year, my fear is, as they did this year, they will find a way to increase the take scheduled for this next year. This year's budget anticipated a takeaway next year of $350 million statewide, another $2 million from our redevelopment agency. And my fear is that as they confront the challenges they face, they will again increase the amount that we could face, again, another $2 billion takeaway statewide and the potential loss of another $11 million from Glendale. I'll tell you, if that occurs, we will be all but out of business in our redevelopment agency and projects like those that you've directed be funded with redevelopments, such as the main library expansion, the Pacific Pool, street and road improvements, park improvements, they will be jeopardized if indeed that occurs. That's the bad news for last week here in Lake Willbe gone.
Mr. Starburt?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver. Would you make the first pitch of many that we're going to make between now and November for that ballot issue that's going to be on November to stop what the state is doing?
Well, I can't make a pitch relative to encouraging people to vote. I will say, though, that there is an initiative that is qualified for the November ballot sponsored by the League of California Cities that attempts to close loopholes like the one the state has used to take local redevelopment agency funds. And I would encourage all residents and voters to be aware of that and to be sure and vote in the upcoming November election.
It's not just redevelopment, it's transportation funds, everything else the state has been finding a way to take. This would be stopped if this measure is passed by the voters. They have over a million signatures already. They only needed 500 and some thousand.
Mm-hmm.
They got over a million.
Mm-hmm.
Already signed up to put it on the ballot. So that'll be a big one for us.
With respect to the programs you have before you this morning.
I have a question. One, I'd like a copy of the opinion. And two, is the association going to appeal?
Yes. The association has filed an appeal or will be filing an appeal. They did ask the appellate court for a stay, and the appellate court denied.
Right.
So the checks have to be written.
Stay was denied. Is there any civil disobedience planned on behalf of the redevelopment associations?
Not as yet. Not as yet, no.
In terms of withholding or?
No. In fact, the encouragement from the CRA is that agencies today take steps to make the payments, along with that filing a letter protest and noting that they're on appeal, but not to withhold the funds because the legislation that enacted this also implemented what we refer to in the business as the death penalty. If the payment isn't made by a redevelopment agency, the city's general fund can make the payment, but isn't obligated to make the payment. That's because under Proposition 1A passed several years ago, the state cannot take, they can only borrow general fund revenues from cities. As a result, if an agency cannot make its payment or doesn't make its payment, what's called the death penalty is imposed. In effect, it's put out of business. It can no longer conduct the business of the redevelopment agency. It can carry forward with any existing contracts, but it cannot take on new projects. Its administrative costs are significantly impaired and limited. So with that, the attorneys with the CRA are recommending that agencies actually make the payment with this letter protest attached. The concern I have, though, is let's say on appeal, the case is overturned and the CRA wins, we local agencies win, then the question becomes, how do you get your money back? In the lawsuit that was filed last year by the CRA against the state at which it won, the CRA was awarded attorney's fees. The problem is, in order to pay the attorney's fees, the legislature has to make an appropriation. And in the absence of an appropriation, the courts cannot force the state to make the payment. So we get a judgment and a decision that there's no way to make the state pay you and there's no way to enforce it. So in the same way, now, if you make these payments and if the case is later on overturned, how do you get your money back? There's no means of enforcing it. So if indeed there's a victory, it can be a very hollow victory.
Okay. Very troubling.
With that, let me turn to Bob Elliott to get us into today's budget discussions. Bob?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, we're going to continue what we started in budget study session number three, that is to discuss the non-general fund operations, primarily enterprise and internal service funds. And just a little bit of background for your recollection, internal service funds operate, they're the twin sister of enterprise fund. They operate the same, they're fee-based, they're rate-supported. However, internal service funds are just that, they're internal to the government only. We set up basically our own insurance company and operate it. We charge the departments. And we'll get into those a little bit later in the afternoon, but just from a basis of operations, the internal service funds operate as a proprietary fund, just like the enterprise funds, where they're rate-supported to the users, in this case, internal to the government. So first up today is Information Services Department and Ed Frega.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ed Frega, Information Services Director. We'd like to give you an overview of our proposed budget for this year, beginning with the topics that we're going to discuss. We'd like to spend one slide on some of the accomplishments that have occurred with ISD this past year, and then discuss the internal service fund. We are moving ISD from a conglomerate of different methods of financing to a straight internal service fund for next year, so we'll explain a little bit about that. And then we look at our budget numbers and challenges for the future, and any questions and answers. So with the next slide, this is just a summary, I chart slide, of what's occurred, and with the council's indulgence, we'll just run through some of these items. Notice that it's divided into four categories. The first three of those categories will be our future internal service fund structures. The first one, infrastructure, has to do with any hardware or software that is generic, it is not designed for any particular application. Applications, then, are those where it's specific to an application, like payroll or accounting or dispatch. And then all of our wireless radio and cellphone services. Beginning at the top, they were under infrastructure. Some of the things we've done, we have expanded, physically expanded, the data center so as to accommodate future growth. We have installed an uninterruptible power supply. This is a device, as you may recall, that came before council, it's now in production, that allows us to have the computers and the network stay operating even if the utility power is lost long enough for a generator to take over that service. So that is now there and also built for future growth. We now have a storage area network and a backup storage area network, and these are in place, they are powered up, and in the next few weeks, we will get them configured and put into production. One of which, the remote one, we have a plan that is in progress, not yet before council, to work with the city of Burbank to mutually share data center area and put our disaster recovery storage area network on their site, and they can do the same to us. So we're working with that. Of course, you know the Smart Grid project. Though the Smart Grid project is seen as a GWP project, we think of it as a major ISD project as well, and we have installed something in the order of 33 servers for that purpose this year. We upgraded the police computers, about 120 of them. We increased their memory this year and added 70 monitors, larger-sized monitors, to help police department. We are bringing before you in the next few weeks a telephone cost reduction. This has taken us all year to review the inventories of all of the wired telephones in the city and determine which ones could be put under, that we would want to retain for some years and could be put under a state contract. This will result in an annual decrease in our land telephone costs citywide of between $150,000 and $190,000. The voice-over IP is basically the technology whereby you can operate telephone service over internet service or IP services. We've now installed that in the Glenview Library. It's a future technology. We're going to be doing more of that, especially for our remote sites where it doesn't make sense to have a PBX. So we will increasingly bring those two technologies together. In applications, we have moved our document management.
That's novel.
Ignore the ghost in the room, Mr. Frega. Former council member coming back to haunt us.
Okay, I'll just carry on. So FileNet. FileNet is our document management system, citywide document management system, and we have moved it to a web version. That means that it is readily available in more places with less difficulty technologically, and that was a major effort, and that's happened this year citywide. We now have a new help desks software. It's an industry-standard one. It has lots of other capabilities, and we're looking to expand that. Our permit system, we have brought that project back. It's been operating since October. It has stayed on schedule and accomplished all the tasks that were necessary. We are now, just now, launching the building and safety portion, the very largest portion of that, and we expect that to be done in October, and we are intent on making sure that that happens. As you will recall, we did the Glendale for Google or Google for Glendale program. We have not heard yet. They have told us that it's a year before they're going to make a selection, so we're not expecting to hear right away. I'm still confident that we are certainly a city that meets all of their criteria. Whether we will be selected, who knows? With regard to wireless, we redid all of the radio antennas in the EOC. That was an area up on the roof that was in really bad shape. We had all kinds of things there that had been put in over time, and that's been cleaned up. The ISIS group has moved to Project 25 at our master site, and that is the new technology for radio. It is the one we believe that L.A. Ricks will adopt and is one that we'll need to then migrate all of the systems of ISIS into. The main core item has been done. Blackberries, as you know, we upgraded 330 city blackberries, and we actually make money every time we do that. We made about $17,000 because the blackberries are free to us, and we recycle them at a charge. So it's irony there, but works. And then with regard to administration, we reorganized everyone in ISD in terms of where they were, got them into their proper groups, secured the area better, and of course, we have been working with finance department very closely on this conversion of the financing of ISD to an internal service fund. So if we go to the next slide, on the left, you see what is the way in which ISD has been funded last year. And as you can see, there are four general fund units, and there are five internal service fund units, so nine different buckets into which the financing was done in the past. We are proposing that it go to simply three buckets, three internal service funds, one for infrastructure, one for the applications, and one for wireless. Wireless has always been an internal service fund, so there is relatively little change there. It's bringing the other ones into that same style, which is what is most common in terms of cities' IS functions. So with that, let's go to the next slide. In doing this transition to an internal service fund, we have looked at some of the staff, some of the IT staff in the city, and we have brought nine of those positions into ISD funding. So you will see an increase in the ISD funding, but it is simply a move of nine positions from one department into another. And so there'd be a corresponding reduction in the departments to which those came. Of the nine, most of those are PC specialists, which are infrastructure people, which we thought made more sense for them to be internally operating within ISD, simply because what they do is the same for everybody in the city. So there are no increases in total position count. Now, as Bob was alluding to, now ISD will simply be an ISD service charge item in each department's budget. So we do an annual process of calculating what our costs are, what our rates will be, distributing that fairly among all the other funds, including the general fund, and then putting a charge into each of those departments, actually, they called it Fund Org, for the next year. And so their costs are taken care of. Part of what we do in that process is do a 10-year plan, which we've done for each of these internal service funds, a 10-year plan of what software and hardware needs to be replaced so that we can think through, financially plan, what's going to happen. And then we take that plan and we smooth it so that the rate does not radically alter year to year. So some years, they're contributing more than they're getting, but that's money that's being put forward for subsequent years when large items have to be acquired. So we planned out the life cycles of all the major components, when we should acquire them, put that in a 10-year plan, and then smoothed it out to come up with the rates for each of the departments. Go to the next slide. So here is now the budgeting. This is the infrastructure internal service fund. This is all of the network servers, hardware, operating systems, that sort of thing. As you can see, there is a significant, appears to be a significant increase of 42% in salaries and benefits. That's the move of those people. And oh, by the way, I should mention that we had four sections. One was administration. There are four people, including myself, that are in that, that administer the department. And those were then, a third of each of those was distributed to these three. So each one of these got a third of that as well. So they all got a little bump up in salaries and benefits. And then maintenance and operation and major purchases. There has been something of a, I wouldn't call it schizophrenia, but the problem is that maintenance and operations should be just maintenance and operations. However, when you're IT, you buy a lot of things that cost less than $5,000. $5,000 and above makes it a capital item. So as far as accounting is concerned, our $5,000 and below items are maintenance and operations. But for us, when we buy radios, for example, or PCs, we could buy hundreds of them. So it's a lot of money. So we need to work through how we're going to show what we're now calling major purchases as opposed to just maintenance contracts and that sort of thing. So that's why you see those numbers vary like that from last year to this year. The net here is a 45% increase, but notice nearly all of that is in that salaries and benefits, moving of people. Next slide. This is the applications area. There, again, 14% increase. That's two people that moved from other departments, plus a third of administration. And in the other areas, maintenance and operations, we have a decrease, so a net of only 2.5% in that group. And the next one is wireless. Here, you see 12%. That's, again, that third of administration. There's fewer people here. There's only about eight people, I think, in this group. And you can see now, we've broken out maintenance and operation, the major purchases, which I think that's important, and you see a net decrease of 6%. The bottom line is shown there in yellow what ISD budget was last year, what it is now, and the 9.7%. And remember, that's nine people that we brought in. That's pretty much almost all of that money. With that, we'll go to the next slide. Challenges and future outlook. Mostly, we have good challenges ahead. We think this approach is going to give us better financial planning for the future. We can actually think through what's going to occur and not be just reacting when a department comes up with something we didn't think about or know about. It's going to improve our use of IT staff. By bringing people who have common skills that can be used throughout the city more closely allied with ISD, we can do a couple of things. We can measure what they do. We can see differences from department to department, and we can encourage them then to be more productive. One of the sayings in IT consulting, which I used to do, was if you don't measure it, you can't manage it. So we're going to move more in that direction of actually seeing what performance is occurring. We want more systematic evaluation of IT needs in the city, and we're going to start working on that after these budgets are completed. We're going to be going around talking to the departments and getting a better picture on some of those kind of outline activities that departments have been doing to understand what they are and what they need to be and how we can assist. Flexibility to meet unforeseen departmental IT needs. We are going to bring forth to council a new idea, it's one that didn't exist two, three months ago. We think it's a very good idea with an internal service fund structure. It's easier for us to fund things that are simply a good idea that no one had thought about before because we're going to actually operate like a little business, and we have to keep our balances. So that's the flexibility to seize new opportunities. And then finally, what I think in general this is going to do for the city is it's going to position ISD to better serve the department's needs, and as a result, we're going to serve the community better, and we're also going to be encouraged, we are going to be encouraged to keep our costs down because the department's going to see our rates. And so with that, I think this positions the city well. Questions?
Mr. Elliott.
One thing to note that Ed didn't say was that this process, and I may mention it for the rest of the internal service funds, the rate-setting action takes place every year. We revisit the activity. We look at how the rates, you know, what the costs are and how we structure the rates. In the process, that's all vetted out with the executives through ITEB, which is the Information Technology Executive Board, much like Steve Zern will be doing with the Fleet Fund. There's a core group of executives that are the users. They basically oversee the activity of the internal service funds. But as the financial side of the equation, this is something we revisit every year. It's not, we just set the rates and walk off and come visit it 10 years later. This is a process we go through every year to look at the ebbs and flows of what the costs have been, if there's ways we can significantly reduce the costs, and especially in technology where costs oftentimes go down, we may be able to push the rates down. And as Ed's able to come up with some performance metrics, we can tweak the rates accordingly to see what the level of service desired is. So very important points when we look at internal service funds, particularly with the technology piece, because there's a lot of dollars, but oftentimes, technology, the trend is downward in terms of costs of the actual capital items, so.
Thank you, Bob. Adding to that, this also causes the departments to examine what they're using. And in this first instance around, we actually had some departments go, oh, we don't need that, when they saw that they were actually going to get charged for it. So it's a good process both directions.
So on that particular point you made, are we talking about just flat fees or are we talking about computing per job or per man-hour?
It's flat fee per year, per Fund Org.
It's actually a very intricate process where we look at the costs of, I mean, I'd like to get it down to where you could say, you know, a PC costs X, but you know, there's a lot of things that go into a PC that are common costs, like the network switches and the wiring and all these ancillary items or things that you just can't say, the cost of a PC is $1,200, why are you charging the department $3,000 a year? Well, there's the help desk to back it up. There's all these different added-on costs, the Microsoft suite of products. So there's a lot of things that get built into that rate structure that is then allocated out on a very different basis depending on what it is. And we went through a very, very complicated allocation process that took, oh, I don't know, four months.
Since January.
And so it's not quite as simple as it sounds, but at the end of the day, it's a product that the departments receive for a fee, in a sense, what they're paying.
Yeah, to clarify that, they end up with one flat amount for every month that year, but it's made up of a whole series of different rates for different things that they get. And they get to examine all of that as well.
Laura?
Thank you for that detailed explanation of your department. I did have a question about the nine employees that transferred from the one department to the other, and I think that you had said something. It went by very quickly, so I was wondering if you could elaborate. You talked about four employees, I think, in admin. Did you say that they had received salary increases and benefits?
No, no. Let me explain. The four employees in admin are in ISD. I'm one of them. And they have always been in ISD, and we simply took their salaries and benefits and distributed them to the three, now the three new internal service funds, so each of them got a third of those costs. So that was just purely internal to ISD.
And there were no salaries?
Yeah, nothing like that. Now, the others were, the nine, were people in various departments with various arrangements. Some were really ISD people, but they were in the department. Some were department people, but they were doing ISD work. Some were half and half. We went through, they were, of those, I think, seven were the PC specialists, which is a generic skill set, and we brought those in. Then there were two in applications that we brought in that were, one was doing GIS, for example, which made more sense as a kind of infrastructure thing, so we have a group that does that, so.
Sorry, just, and very briefly, if you can just explain to me with the smart meters, how the cost breaks down between GWP and the city?
Through that same cost allocation process, we watch very carefully, and in fact, some big portions are, in many cases, we go 100% GWP. This was done for Smart Grid project. GWP pays 100%, and we watch that very closely.
Mr. Quintero.
When you say brought them in, you mean in an accounting sense, or do you also mean physically brought them in?
We are not physically bringing them in. We want to leave them where they are, working with the departments. So yes, thanks for asking that question. We brought them in accounting-wise, and we also, in an accounting way, we're going to monitor more closely what they're doing or not doing.
John?
No. Very good presentation.
Just one question, which is kind of a larger question. Would a change in our relationship with Charter affect your budget significantly?
Anyone answer that?
That sort of gets into pending litigation and other things too, but.
It does, I think, by means of the INET and Charter's interest in moving us to market rates for both our cable drops as well as the use of the INET. And those discussions are currently subject to litigation, as well as negotiations with Charter. I'm optimistic that we will reach a satisfactory settlement of that and make a recommendation to you this month sometime.
Are we assuming then, with your budget, a status quo of our?
Yes. Well, we're assuming that we still have that service.
And no significant increase in cost?
Okay. And I think the ultimate settlement, assuming we get there, will be supportive of that.
If there's no other questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will move on to community services and parks. George Chapchan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Bob, are you going to do the powerpoint? Okay. Community Services and Parks Department has two non-general funds. One is the Recreation Fund, the Enterprise Fund, and the other one is the Nutritional Meals Fund. And we'll go through the budget and some of the challenges that we're going to be facing with these funds. As you can see here, we have a total revenue of 2.4, I mean, I'm sorry, 2.4 balance reserve fund for '09-10. Our preliminary estimate for '10-11 is 2.1 million. There's several reasons for that. One is the salaries and benefits increase. These were, we have 12.6 FTEs charged to this account. And these are people who are the civic staff, sports staff, lifelong learning folks, our permit staff, and 40% of our aquatics. And with that comes step increases in some medical benefits that have increased the cost there. In addition to that, we are part of the cost allocation process, where we are being charged probably a total of $207,000 over here, internal service charges. So we have to factor that in now, in the fund that wasn't factored in before. So we're going to be working on that. Next slide, Bob. This is our Recreation Enterprise Fund fund balance history since I've been here. As you can see, we've built it up. The staff has done a marvelous job of building up this reserve fund. It went from $292,000 in '03-04 to 2.3 million reserves in '09-10 estimate right now. And some of that, I think we were hoping to, part of the reason why we're building this fund up is, and I'll get into it a little bit later on, the sports complex gets prop pay funds, two prop pay funds. And we receive a subsidy of about $175,000 to $260,000 a year, depending on what our needs are. So there's prop pay funds available for us to use, and that's going to be running out. So we're trying to build up this reserve to help with, offset that cost. We also, this also helps with the fund balance over in Civic Auditorium. As you know, we have an operating loss probably between $350,000 to almost $400,000 a year in the Civic Auditorium. So this helps offset that operating loss. There's no general fund money at all in the Civic Auditorium, so it all comes from the Enterprise Fund. In addition to that, we do at times use part of this for some capital improvements to our fields, to our playgrounds. Anytime we need some smaller capital improvements, we'll use that fund for that. Next slide, Bob. This is just the cost breakdown of the impact for the cost allocation. Next slide, Bob. Thank you. Again, the Civic Auditorium, here's where one of our bigger challenges is, it's $350,000 a year. We continue to implement strategies to reduce this. We are now looking at potentially using the upper level for sports programming during the week, during the work week, and using it for special events during the weekend. And we're looking at potentially converting it to basketball use. And we can do that, and I think we can bring in over $200,000 a year, just in rentals for that facility. The other potential use for that could be renting it out to a banquet hall operator. And again, we're looking at potentially $300,000 to $400,000 if we do that annually in lease. So those are kind of the challenges, and we'll bring that back to council if you have any thoughts on that. But I think we are going to be moving towards utilizing the upper level at this point for some basketball, because it's a really big need in our community. And we can see some huge revenue from that. The termination of prop pay funds, as I said, we've received this since fiscal year 1999 to 2000, and the annual draw was $260,000 a year, and this comes from the prop pay funds. There were two issues of the prop pay funds. One was 1992, and the other one was 1996. And the benefit assessment average is about $189,000 annually. We were able to reduce that last several years. Our draw was about $176,000 for the last several years of this fund, which allows us to extend it further out. But we anticipate the first prop pay issue, the '92, to run out in '15, '16. And that's about 60% of our revenue at this point. And the '96 issue will run out probably in 2019. So we're going to start gearing up for the loss of this revenue. And ways of doing that are potential fee increases. We don't currently charge for evening use for the lights, for the utilities. Those are all things that we're going to be looking at, hopefully boost the revenue so that the sports complex operates totally independent of any subsidy. And I think we can do that depending on the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me hold, I mean.
No, go ahead.
Well, I think we can do that. I think we've talked about, Bob is going to be looking at a fee schedule and all our fees, and maybe we'll look at what, we've already looked at what other cities charge. We think we're comparable, but maybe there's room for improvement on that.
Yeah, I'm just curious, just generally, what do we charge for, you know, a team, an adult team that wants to go to the sports complex and play on a regular schedule, or a youth team? What are the fees?
Yeah, we typically charge about $45 for the AYSOs, the youth teams, and about $65 for the private or the adult leagues. And that's kind of market, although we have a prime facility that people are dying to use. I mean, it's packed every day.
And those are, that 65 or 45, that's per hour?
Per hour, per field, yes. Yeah. And we have a huge demand for that. And the AYSOs and the home admins do want the facilities, and they're willing to pay for that. Now, they don't pay for other facilities, those are free to them. But the sports complex, they do pay for.
Okay, carry on.
Next slide, Bob. The other challenge to our Enterprise Fund is the IRS compliance issue. You know, we were making $35,000 to $40,000 a year on our classes, our contract classes. That may have to get adjusted depending on the impact of converting the contract class, our contractors to city employees. We've looked at this issue, the IRS, and I think November 2009 came down with a ruling that these folks had to be either independent, totally independent contractors, or they fit the definition of a city employee. And at this point, they are now city employees. In our fold, we pay them for the classes at this point as city employees. And with that comes, you know, a slew of issues like benefits and workers' comp and those kind of things. So we're not sure what the impact at this point is going to be. We don't think it's going to be to the positive. We've already lost 12 instructors who didn't want to be city employees. They elected to be totally, they wanted to be independent contractors, and that, we couldn't work that out. So we've lost 12 instructors already. However, having said that, we're now seeing more and more people using our classes. So the employees, the contractors that were converted to employees are now bringing in a little bit more attendance in their classes. So we'll have to see how that plays out.
Can't we create an intermediary organization that would then contract with those individuals?
I think we looked at that. We looked at that with finance, and we couldn't do that.
If I may, the, this issue is very broad. Internal Audit did a comprehensive review of the city in terms of our IRS compliance in response to the IRS is now actively auditing local municipalities. And having, this is one of their key issues, and they have racked up some huge findings against cities. So in our discussions, Mr. Starbidge kind of gave Audit the direction to, you know, look at how we comply with the IRS regulations. And there were some issues, this being a particularly large one. This is a result of a court case as well. So we wanted to get in compliance with setting these folks up. We did look at working with an outside employment contractor to employ these folks, and there wasn't a lot of interest. It just wasn't a high enough dollar threshold to be able to do that. So the end result was, we converted these folks into employees.
We might add that the intermediary businesses are also running into trouble. We're facing this in other areas where we utilize hourly employees hired through private contractors. IRS is looking at those relationships. And there have been situations where they say, you may be hiring them through a contractor, but essentially, they're working like your employees. You have to carry all of the associated costs with them. And IRS has become very, very active. Cities in Southern California have been audited. We received, hey, I forget what they called it, but they sat down with us and said, we're here on an advisory basis to let you know what your obligations are. So before we come and do an audit, and this was about a year ago, they came and sat down and they said, we're the IRS and we're here to help you. So before we come back and do an audit, let us tell you what the standards are for you. And these intermediary firms are something they're looking at very closely. So if you utilize people as you would an employee, but you hire them through an intermediary firm, IRS is saying, sorry, they're your employees, you've got to do withholding and all the other obligations that come along with that. They've been very tough on that.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of disturbs me, because I know it's certainly going to increase the costs.
Absolutely.
And the services that we provide are not our core, they're not our core recreational services. They're, in fact, I got an email, someone was, I guess, got the community services calendar and saw a class on belly dancing and sent off a hot email, how can you provide these? They misunderstood, this was a paid class, but when it, certainly there's a segment of the community that's interested in that and many of the other types of diverse services. And when it comes time to cut, next time around, who knows what we're going to face next year? I hate to say that, I think I would look at those before I look at cutting staffing at the sports park or anything else.
Although true, although some of these classes, for example, you can take a watercolor class, the same class that GCC or PCC offers, at a much higher rate, same instructor, not same, but same level, at a much less cost to, you know, the residents. So we do have a big following of people who take classes and continue to take these classes with the same instructors. So it is a need out there. It does raise revenue for us. It's a moneymaker, but at this point, I'm not sure how much we'll make after this. So we're going to, we'll assess it. And if it's a loss, then we'll have to take a look at, you know, whether we continue or just drop some of the classes that aren't bringing in enough revenue to sustain it.
Right.
So I think we'll take a look at it, we'll assess it.
Let's be creative.
Well, we are. We're being creative.
Not sure there's a way, let's get our crack legal department, you know, lawyers can find ways around almost any.
I think Dana Point, one of the cities, one of the cities is challenging the IRS ruling, I think. And so we'll see what happens.
They are challenging.
There is a challenge to it, I believe.
So keep us posted on that.
Yeah. But we're looking at every potential way of increasing revenue. Some of the ways we do, the Enterprise Fund, we make money from cell antennas. We have eight cell antennas, another one coming online. We're trying to co-locate on the cell antennas, which is another $500 per antenna. So we're looking at all those possibilities. You know, the classes make us money, facility rentals make us money, the picnics, those sort of things do make money for the city. So those are some of the revenue sources. The other challenge we'll have is our two facilities, Maple Park, that's going to be down for renovation, and we usually make about $35,000 in rentals there. And Pacific Park, which has some water issues in the gym, we'll be looking at those. We're not sure how extensive that's going to be. But if that goes down, that's potentially $100,000, $120,000 a year for us in revenue. So that will impact us. Just want to let council know about that. Next, the nutritional meals program, you know, we've been funded.
I'm sorry, let me back up to that. Wasn't there, we had done some analysis, and I think you had determined what went wrong with that. So was there any, action against the contractor?
There is.
Loss of revenue, et cetera, and all that stuff?
We're in the middle of a lawsuit with that. We've taken depositions. We've had experts go out there and do constructive testing, where they'll take walls apart. So we are in the middle of that, legals handling that. So we're going to be going after everyone involved in the construction of the facility, including the design.
So with a little asterisk, there's a possibility that there could be some recovery?
Right.
And we'll be giving, we'll be giving the council a more detailed briefing in closed session once we've completed these assessments and legals done their preliminary work. Well, I assume the contractors had E and O, bond, et cetera, right?
Right, right.
Actually, good news in this one is these are substantial, ongoing firms that have good coverage, so. But the problem could be rather extensive, so.
I think Mr.
We want to complete the assessments and bring it into closed session, discuss with you.
With slides, I think. Steve Weiss is going to bring in a slide, whole presentation for the council on that. The other fund, of course, is the Nutritional Meals Program, and this is, you know, older Americans' fund. And we've received this throughout the years. However, just to note that it has been decreasing over the years, and now it's about $79,000 less than it used to be over the years. We did get a one-time infusion of $82,000 in stimulus money for meals, home-delivered meals, and care management for the senior program. But this is an area where we continue to see a need, and an ever-increasing need. Because one, we have a large population of seniors in the ARC area in walking distance. We have over 10,000 seniors that live in the walking area of the ARC. And the estimates from the Census Bureau is we should see a 30% increase in the next 10 years of seniors in that area. So just to look out there, we're looking for ways of increasing our services there or meeting the demands of the seniors. Bob, if you go to the next slide, I think we may have some numbers. These are the increases we're seeing, the congregant meals, 23%, home-delivered meals, 34%. Again, the funding level's been reduced, and the patrons aren't donating as much as they used to donate. We can't ask them specifically for a certain amount. They're given an envelope, and whatever they put in there is the donation towards the meals. But we are seeing less and less in donation area, and more and more in terms of the needs. Next, Bob. And that's it for the presentation.
George, to be clear on this last fund, it's set up as a special revenue fund?
Yeah, special.
And yet, the deficit each year is covered by the general fund, isn't it?
Well, the general fund pays for the staff, it's the matching. But at the end of the year, we're one of the few sites that actually meet our goals and go beyond it. So the county, whenever they have surplus money, will offer it to us. And that's why we'll come to, you know, annually with a surplus that the county has, and we'll make that up with the county's surplus money.
John?
George, I have two questions. Rehabilitating a site. Thank you. Aren't funds to do this sort of things right now? But my question is that we have a test, we had a test well, water well drilled on that property, and we found water. And what is the status of that? And what's the inner workings between GWP and Parks and Rec as it relates to the future of that property? In particular, revenue from that water source, which I was led to believe at the time, would help to offset the maintenance costs of the property related to irrigation and so on.
That's a very good question, Councilman Draymond. I believe the GWP is going to be coming back to the council soon for a contract, for a contract to expand the drilling of the well. I think they've found that the well is a good site, a very good site for water. And I know they agreed to terms where we would see some revenue from the water. And I know they agreed to terms where we would see some revenue from the water that is pumped out of that site in terms of at least maintenance for the facility. They're close to starting to pump water, I believe. I'm not sure exactly when they'll be coming back to council. I don't know, Jim, if you know when they're coming back. But I saw an email, I think Friday, and it is soon. I think they're coming, they're going to be coming back soon. Glenn and I may have to sit down and talk about some other terms as well, but we'll do that.
And the whole concept of keeping all of that infrastructure underground so we preserve it.
Yes.
The other question comes back to the civic auditorium. I just want to, and I don't know what the specifics are, we've heard you mention this before, but just as one council member, I am greatly concerned about the notion of taking that facility and turning it into a banquet hall because of the size and capacity of it. There are other facilities that fall within Park's purview that are not money-making facilities. I don't think we make a tremendous amount of money on the Casa Verdugo, for example, or the Casa Adobe, but I haven't heard any suggestions that we turn those into banquet halls. There are all kinds of facilities that this city has that are not necessarily money-makers. So, I am a little concerned about that. And maybe there's no reason to be concerned. Maybe when that concept comes back, it will make perfect sense. I've heard this before over the years and that I've been here, and I'm not convinced so far.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
On that point, I feel the same way. I don't want a banquet hall in there. That means liquor, a lot of liquor. Just don't need it in a civic auditorium. There's enough banquet halls in this town. More supposedly morphing into banquet halls, so.
I agree. I think, and the council members, I think if we can put in some portable baskets there and take them out during weekend use, we can see up to 211,000, 215,000 a year. So, we reduce the deficit.
I wanted to ask on that point, what about tennis courts when basketball isn't? Or is basketball year-round?
Basketball is year-round. It's a huge demand for us. There's always requests for gym rentals. We don't have enough gyms here in the city.
So, year-round, weekdays, for sure.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's a facility, it's there vacant. It's not being used a lot during the day except for testing. We have Human Resources that does huge testing there, six to eight times a year. But mostly, I think we can use that. It's a gym floor, it's a hardwood floor.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about it.
Without damaging it, you know. But we will be very cognizant of the fact that this is a historic structure and not to alter in any way.
Is that your idea?
Um.
Watch out, George.
Don't go there.
I'm sorry?
I said, watch out.
Don't answer that question.
Yeah, when the discussion comes back on the civic auditorium, I think it would be great to see some real comprehensive plans for it, you know, beyond, we could do this for a little while, or we can rent it out for that. But a long-term plan and what's going to happen to it over time and what we can do with it. I don't know if you can do a basketball court by day and then still have it be an interesting venue for a show over the weekend. I don't know what that does in terms of the floor and the smell and the ambiance in there, everything else. I mean, maybe it works. It's been a while since I've been in a basketball court.
Febreze is magical, you know.
Yeah. But, no, I think we need to really, you know, we really need to look at this auditorium as what's its future going to be, because it's kind of sitting there just languishing, and we're either going to have to invest some real money into it to make it something that's viable, and we should have that option as well. But we really need to see what the long-term plan and vision is for that space.
Absolutely. And maybe if we can raise enough money, we can use some of that enterprise fund to reinvest into the civic at this point.
So, hopefully, we can get something back sooner rather than later with just a whole lot of different options.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Do you have any handouts? We have no more handouts.
With that, we'll go to police for a couple of their funds.
Were you anticipating us getting this far, Mr. Starbuck? Are we ahead of your schedule or?
I'm hoping to get far.
Okay. I didn't know how we were on your planned schedule.
My answer to HR.
I can work in the yard.
Okay.
Excuse me, just for clarification. Are we saying that at 6 o'clock?
It's a worst-case scenario.
Oh, okay.
We don't talk too much.
I see.
Do you have handouts on the police or?
Just for note, while we're talking about budget, that would save us money on lunch.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Now, we have to go to 6.
No, we have to.
Just go to 12 and then eat.
Good luck. Did you bring your magnifying glass, Mr. City Manager? Deduct that from our pages.
Yeah, left with much.
And you don't have?
Oh. Okay, Captain. Good morning.
Apparently, we do not have handouts for.
It's my apologies. We do not have handouts for the police presentation. I was relying on the PowerPoint.
That's one hit on them.
Police saving money.
Yeah, that's right. Helicopter and.
That's a plus on you.
It's four accounts, it's relatively.
Yeah, it's not big.
And, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members and staff, we're going to talk about the other major funds for the police department, which is anything exclusive of the general fund, of course. Our projected budget for those funds for 1011, changes in those funds for our future outlook, and we'll, of course, entertain your questions, and we'll have all the answers that you're seeking. These funds consist of the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, Special Police Grant Fund, Police Supplemental Law Enforcement Fund, and the Joint Helicopter Operation Fund. Each of these is completely independent from a general fund with the exception of the Joint Helicopter Operation Fund, which does receive some funding through the general fund process. First, I want to talk about the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund, and in actuality, we should probably refer to this as the Asset Forfeiture Fund these days, because when these were instituted back in the early '80s, narcotics was really the only source of asset forfeiture. Since that time, and especially in recent years, we've had the opportunity to engage in some significant asset forfeitures for non-narcotics operations, to include white-collar crime, fraud, identity theft, and, as you saw most recently, joint operations with the Internal Revenue Service that resulted in the seizure of a building and henceforth some asset forfeiture. Because of this, we're seeing some growth, even though we're actually seeing a dwindling amount of narcotics seizures of assets, because the narcotic smugglers are doing business much, much differently than they used to in the '80s. And you don't hear these multimillion-dollar seizures of wrapped $100 bills that are stacked in a warehouse along with bundles of cocaine. They're much more sophisticated. The money really isn't even reaching the United States at all that often. A lot of these transactions are taking place in Mexico, in South America, in Canada, just so they protect their funds from the ability of the American enforcement personnel to actually seize their money and get it off the street. This coming year, you'll see we have budgeted over $1,300,000, which is a substantial increase of $700,000 and some change from even last year. This is going to be, projected to be, one of the most significant asset forfeiture years that we've had in more than a decade. And a lot of that's partially fueled by the IRS forfeiture, but we're also seeing some other significant forfeitures in some of the other cases that we're working. And in fact, as you can see in the lower right-hand corner, there's a little bar chart there that shows what our annual asset forfeitures have been, and as you can see, '07, '08 was substantial. We had a little dip in '08, '09. But as we talked about, our increase for 2010 and '11, up to the over $1,300,000 is going to take that up well beyond where we've been in the past. Of course, some of the things that we have to be cautious of here, these are enforcement-driven actions. This is administrative action. We are not in the business of going out and looking just for money that the crooks have. Our business is to get the drugs off the street, out of our schools, put the bad guys behind bars, and then, if we happen to see their money, we're more than happy to take it, process it through the system. So, there's a lot of fluctuation. In some years, we have more than others. It can be pretty precarious. '05, '06, our actual revenues that we receive through asset forfeiture were not sufficient to cover the expenses that we actually pay out of the asset forfeiture account, because we do have some recurring and sustained operations out of there, which includes, you'll see under currently funds, two SROs in our schools are paid exclusively out of these funds, specialized training we engage in, and special projects that we engage in for the department, which is like surveillance equipment and so forth, and capabilities that we'll establish.
Mr. Weaver?
Then there'd be no sense trying to add an additional SRO because of fluctuation from year to year.
You really wouldn't? I would caution against adding any recurring obligations to these funds for that very reason.
Fair enough.
I think it sounded really good in the '80s when millions of dollars were coming in every year to these accounts, because, you know, the market was flush with cocaine money, to be honest with you. That has since dwindled considerably. It's a lot more hit and miss now, both in the white-collar crime and in narcotics seizures. So, I think it'd be very precarious to do that, because while this year might be $1,300,000, we don't know what next year's going to be. It could be $200,000, it could be zero. Anything's possible. Because, you know, once again, the crooks are very sophisticated. They learn from us. We take their money, and they take a lot of steps to launder the money in different ways to keep it out of our hands. Future outlooks? The use of this money, which kind of relates to the SROs, is very restrictive on how this money can be utilized. The purpose behind the federal authorization and the state authorization for asset forfeiture to come back to the cities is for specific purposes, to further law enforcement capabilities. Included in those are some programs like the SROs, who are justified because they engage in narcotics and drug educational programs in the schools. That's some of the very few people that you can actually pay for out of these funds because they serve that purpose. The funds can be used for specialized training. We engage in a lot of our narcotics training, our gang enforcement training, our SWAT training can be paid for because our SWAT teams engage in narcotics enforcement. It runs a full gamut on being able to pay for their training. And again, as I mentioned, special projects, we buy surveillance equipment, we buy computer equipment, things that further our ability to continue not only narcotics investigations, but general investigations as well. Anything that furthers law enforcement efforts can be supported by this. Those guidelines are constantly changing. The feds, in fact, just the last couple of months, have issued new guidelines that did change things substantially, but nothing that's going to handicap our ability to use these funds. We're also concerned that the federal government and the state might seek means by which they can hold back more of these funds. Right now, if you're the primary agency in a case, you can get up to 80% of those funds, 65% on state cases. 15% of all the money received from state cases has to be used for training and education. And a lot of those other funds are diverted back into the state and into the federal agencies. And then, any agency that participates with you, even if they just had a relatively minor role in your case, will share in that. And the amount that's shared is determined by the agency that's dividing the money. In most cases, it's state asset forfeiture, and about a little less than half the cases is federal forfeiture that we look at.
So, that amount will be going down in future years?
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Federal and state.
Okay, the special grant fund. This includes the money that's being, some of the money that's being earmarked for our DNA laboratory. It's special grants, and I think there's approximately 17 grants that play into this particular fund. It's considered to be a pretty healthy source, though it, again, because we're fed out of various federal and state programs, how stable it's going to be in the future is really hard to say. Therefore, we only spend what we receive in these grants. We don't tend to put any kind of load on this. As it's received, it's programmed, and then we invest it in our future needs. This does include two officers that are paid for out of this, and this is out of the state cops grant that comes down through the system every year, and their narcotics interdiction. And I take that back, these are not the cops officers. These are a trap officer who handles auto-theft investigations on a task force in CalMet, which is a methamphetamine task force officer that's funded. These are direct streams that pay specifically for those officers, and once those streams end, those positions will be abolished. Until then, we sustain them with the funds, dollar for dollar. Again, there's 17 different funding sources that are in this mix, a lot of little programs, but it includes things like our K-9 program, pedestrian education through the State Office of Traffic Safety, DOI also through OTS, gang enforcement, we receive various grants there. Most of them are small, but they go a long way. Real estate fraud grants that we receive through the district attorney's office. Again, some DNA lab funding that's in there, and the two officers are engaged in narcotics enforcement. Again, a lot of the federal grants have been very difficult to fund because of Homeland Security. That's where most of the federal money is going. Not as much out there for us to reach out for as far as seeding new programs for enforcement purposes. Hoping that as the Homeland Security alarms start to diminish a little bit, barring there be further incidents like we had in New York last week, that some of that money will start coming back into community policing programs, which really would help us build this area a little bit more. It's going to be pretty substantial, but it's been a lot harder to feed. And again, state grants. We're not seeing as many state grants because the state is, in fact, reallocating a lot of its own money, trying to fill that budget gap that they have, so we don't have a lot of state money coming through. Okay, the supplemental law enforcement grant. This is the one that actually feeds two community policing officers. Again, it's one where it's a little bit of a gamble. We've had these officers, we actually used to have a heap personnel attached to this grant fund, because the numbers used to be substantially higher than the fee from this grant fund. It's state money, the state allocates it based upon population, and this number fluctuates pretty wildly from year to year. They advise us pretty routinely and pretty accurately what it's going to be, but that has changed at times. They've advised us in the past that we have a certain amount of money coming, we budget for it, we start to spend it, and we advise at the last minute that the state's doing a whole bad. So, again, this is another state stream of funding that's very volatile. There are two personnel in this, and again, as you can see, even the numbers for this year, we're probably going to run a little bit short of what we actually need to sustain those two positions. So, we're making that up in other. $215,000 less than even what we had last year, and we don't even know if the state's going to even fund this position, these positions, next year. And again, there's two full-time officers out of this, but we're going to be watching that one very closely.
That covered it.
Here again, going to go next year. And last but not least, we have our Joint Helicopter Operation. This particular program, the salaries and benefits you see up there, those are overtime. You might wonder how we pay the salaries of helicopter pilots and observers with that amount of money. That is just their overtime. The rest is the general fund feed. The M and O, of course, includes depreciation of the aircraft and the maintenance and operations of three aircraft and the facilities that we share with the City of Burbank Police Department. It's a pretty significant investment, but it has a lot of great returns, as we'll see on the next slide here. It's a 50/50 program with the City of Burbank, and our police patrols in the air provide narcotics interdiction. We assist with code enforcement. We assist the fire department in operations, engage with Public Works, utilities, water and power, SWAT operations, swiftwater rescue, crime scene photography, and that's just a few of the incidents that we get involved with. But you can see over 1,600 flight hours this last year. They participated in 230 arrests, bonded to more than 2,500 calls for service, and over 1,500 of those incidents, they were the first on scene. Of course, the helicopter's moving at over 100 miles an hour and doesn't have to wait for traffic signals, so I guess they're pretty quick. And they conducted more than 8,400 Homeland Security checks. They are routinely, while in the air, checking our critical infrastructure, our facilities, suspicious activity, all of our water systems, and more than 8,400 of these checks were done last year alone. As far as a future outlook for the air support, we're constantly looking at opportunities to partner with other organizations. It's been effective working with Burbank thus far, that the ability to handle our contiguous cities is very effective. We are partnering in a lot of ways with Pasadena, new ways there. Pasadena has a program called FAST that provides services out to the east part of the San Gabriel Valley, I think of the Inas, and we partner with them on occasion to make sure that we have some synergy in that aircraft that's up in the air, and we're waiting to see what the future might hold. There are some additional partnerships. And that is it.
Captain, before you leave this one, how much did we save when we consolidated the operations with Burbank? Do you recall?
I don't recall the exact number. I want to say it was around $400,000, but off the top of my head.
It was a chunk. And that reduced one helicopter from four to three.
And the M and O number, does that include the replacement cost for the helicopter?
I believe it does.
Yes.
And you're still pursuing consolidation with Pasadena?
We're still looking at every opportunity we have there, Pasadena. And as we've had talks, we've been doing experimental regionalization efforts.
Do we expect the same level of savings if we can implement the same program with Pasadena?
I don't know if it'll be the same level because we've already done a pretty significant consolidation with Burbank, but on a, to scale, probably something similar.
Your number's probably headed. How many flight hours do we currently have then in the course of the year?
About 1,600.
1,600?
This is pretty much a full year on the three helicopter system.
What aircraft does Pasadena?
They're not flying the NOTARS such as we are. They actually have a mixture of different aircrafts that they have. They're including a large frame. I think they're all turbine-driven aircraft, but I believe they still have some Instrom, which is some of the smaller aircraft, and a larger Bell platform.
And that larger frame, is that for rescue-type operations?
They actually use that as their FAST helicopter. It was a military surplus that they got. I believe they bought three or four of these helicopters and parted them together to keep them airborne.
Okay. Anyone want to tour that airframe?
Captain, about the federal cops grant, I know that's always a stop that we make when we're in Washington. Did you say that the funding is being diverted to Homeland Security and that you don't anticipate continued funding, or what was your comment?
There will be some funding. Since 9/11 and since the establishment of the Department of Homeland Security and the Homeland Security Grant Processes, very little money has gone through cops or any of the other justice programs. They have sustained their operations and kept their personnel on the payroll by having them handle a lot of funding that's come out of DHS. But until the RARA money came through last year, there was really nothing.
You can say it, ARA. ARA money. I like hearing that. It makes me feel important.
Two Rs, the ARA money, yes. Until that started coming through last year, that was the first really revitalization we've seen of those grant funding programs. And even then, it was very limited, but we've just been advised that they are going to be diverting additional money into their, like, their cops hiring program this year, and that because we did submit for ARA money last year, even though it was denied for the cops program, they're going to consider us one of the eligible parties for this year's grant process, which would be one of those programs to hire police officers.
And we have our new lobbying firm that perhaps can...
Yes, Ferguson, yes. And they're very much aware of this. We've been talking with them.
Some new energy in those...
We've been having some good dialogue with them about this.
Right, in those events.
Absolutely.
Okay, questions?
Captain Niede, I have a question for you. You know, last year when we were dealing with budget and out of that came some overall changes in how the department operates in terms of structure, in other words, in terms of creating district areas and so on. How is that going?
It's going very well. And of course, you know, that didn't so much involve these particular budget streams, but in our general fund, it's made a significant difference. The area command system's extremely effective, though it's still, it's very much in its infancy and it's being combined with the technology advances we've had. You've seen some of that was in the news press last week, having to do with public access to actual crime data. That's all coming together very well, and it's a lot, it's a much more efficient model than what we were embracing in the past.
Yeah, I should have prefaced that by saying I realize that is not related specifically to some of these things, but in terms of police and budget and where we're going to be at some point this year and having those conversations, that was a key element in sort of tying together the budget last go-round. And so I did want to ask, how is that working in terms of...
It's going very well. You know, it really has opened the doors to a number of opportunities that perhaps we ourselves didn't realize that we had. And I guess one of the best ways to sum it up is, as Chief DePape has mentioned in the past, we're going from a shotgun approach to street policing, where you just hope that the cops in the right place at the right time, to where we're trying to predict where the crime's going to occur and not only intercede in that activity but prevent. And the combination of technology and the localized boots-on-the-ground that we have out of area policing, I think that makes a big difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments, Mr. Whitaker?
Well, I would really like to see us push the coordination with Pasadena. I mean, we do it across the board, from utilities to transportation to everything else, so I hope we can work together with their police and do what we can do with it.
And we fully anticipate having a number of opportunities there because they, like everybody else, are having some significant issues and are looking for the most efficient way to do business. We're also looking forward to their selection of the new police chief, which should be by the end of this month, I understand. And that will give us some significant opportunities to have our direct point of contact over there with their new division head, and I'm sure we'll be opening some immediate dialogue with that individual.
And where are their aircraft based?
They're just off the 210 freeway of north of the Rose...
At Woodbury or Lincoln.
It's near Devil's Gate.
Yeah.
It's over in the area. But it's immediately above the freeway. In fact, if you...
They're not providing quite a bit of services, but the San Gabriel City is east of them. All the little communities that can't afford their own aerial support are now contracting for it. So Pasadena has quite an aerial support group.
Yes, they have their own air force. It's a significant...
I didn't want to use that term, but...
It's like a small third world country, but they have their own air force.
That's going to be the headline you realize tomorrow in the Pasadena Star News. The city manager says...
Since we're doing so well on time, I have a question, a little off-topic, but I am curious. There's a ballot measure this year to legalize marijuana, and I'm wondering how that would impact our law enforcement, the time that they spend on narcotics recovery, and whether that would impact anything budget-wise.
You know, it really probably isn't going to have savings for us as far as the non-enforcement because, you know, probably the most time we spend with marijuana enforcement is with minors, and there's not going to be a change there. You're still going to have an issue with minors possessing, it'll still be a contraband. And it all depends on the means by which they legalize, if they do legalize. If it's going to be a prescriptive drug is one thing, because then you still know that you're going to have some substantial controls and handling and packaging and quality control. If you've been watching, you know, some of the news lately on the marijuana smuggling in general, a lot of it's coming from countries where there's no control on what pesticides are used, you know. And so we have, you see, our youth and other marijuana users, they don't know where it's coming from. They don't really know what they're smoking, and a lot of them are ingesting pesticides. So, you know, perhaps if they go the route of actual pharmaceutical controls, I think there might be some benefits to law enforcement there, but I think if it's open market, similar to what it is now, we're going to continue to have to invest a substantial amount of time in enforcement. The other concerns we're going to have, you're still going to have the issue of people being under the influence, whether they lawfully possess it or not. There's issues that have to do with, you know, public intoxication and operating motor vehicles and other equipment. So again, that's, it's still going to be a pretty substantial call for us.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there a next?
The balance of the day until 6 o'clock will be taken up by the finance department.
Who I can assure you...
And a riveting discussion on the internal service funds managed by the finance department.
Was this meeting notice?
Yes.
I just...
It will be up on you, eh?
Although it's causing us to go double-check.
Actually, did we read the report? Do we have to read that into the record? Is that required, Mr. Garcia? That it was posted? Let's just read that into the record, the posting of the notice for this meeting.
Remind that our ever-vigilant news media is here and has been here all morning.
Yes. Just want to make sure.
I've seen her doze periodically, but mostly she's been awake and alert.
I was just noting, Mr. Mayor, that in the, the next presentation consists of 26 slides. And I was just wondering what the city might save if we were, say, to limit that to 13 slides in the PowerPoint.
I can do it twice as fast. Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Almost all. Are we waiting?
No, go ahead.
Okay, we'll get going. Wanted to touch lightly, not lightly, actually, on the internal service funds that provide the benefits and that finance administers along with human resources. And at one point, I'll invite Matt Doyle up to kind of be the color commentator on a few of the issues that his department oversees. Just kind of wanted to give a little bit of recap. I mentioned internal service funds earlier, and we have discussed most of these in various sessions, but just to recap, a lot of what we have, the Public Works Department operates the fleet fund. Police Department has the helicopter fund, which we just discussed, and IS has now the three internal service funds to isolate their various functions. The finance department solely has the liability insurance fund, which we'll talk about more in detail. And then Human Resources has a whole slew of various internal service funds that we use to account for different pieces of benefits within the city. And I may mention now, you'll see the dental, medical, and vision insurance, which previously had been set up in three different funds. We're actually looking at combining those into one health benefits fund, just to make things a little bit simpler. With that, we'll run, go through the funds that provide the different benefits, the unemployment insurance. Cities are a little bit unique in that they don't pay unemployment insurance directly to the state. We basically get the pass and we're able to self-fund what we get charged. If one of our employees gets laid off or becomes unemployed, they can file for unemployment insurance. The state then sends us a bill of which we then have to pay. We do that through this fund, and we fund it with a slight charge to the different departments through their payroll. And it's not a lot, although I will say, with what we've been, had to do with the employees becoming, or the contractors becoming employees, if we see more folks becoming unemployed and filing for unemployment, our costs will probably increase a little bit. That in of itself, the amounts are not significant. So we don't see a lot of increase in this. The rate is 0.1% of payroll. It does have a positive fund balance, which is not a lot, but we'll talk about some of the funds in a second that do not. One of those is the liability insurance fund. And basically, what that does is provide insurance for the city in a vast amount of different ways. We charge that out a couple of ways to the departments. If it's a particular policy to a department, they get billed for that policy, plus administrative costs for the folks that operate our insurance function. And then for general liability, we assess a rate, basically, to the departments for that. This fund is still in a very large deficit position. As of last year, it was approximately $10 million deficit. We discussed that issue when I presented the CAFR back in December. It was a management letter comment. And when I say that, it wasn't a finding from the auditors, but as a best practices, your internal service fund should be with a slight surplus or only slightly in the deficit position because they do ebb and flow over time. This fund was hit several years ago with huge settlements from the rainstorms, and it really has not recovered since then. So we put together a 10-year plan, of which we will revisit again every year, looking at how we fund this particular fund. We are raising the rates to all the non-general fund, and we will discuss this more in depth when I bring back the third-quarter report later this month. But our proposal is to make a one-time, or a transfer this year from the general fund to these, to this fund and several others to stem a rate increase otherwise that would have gone through to the various general fund departments. With that, we're raising our rate from 2.2% to 2.5% that we charge off to the different departments. This fund, we're still pursuing settlement with AIG, which will help, and some other, I guess we're going to look at selling the properties that we acquired through the settlements. And that in and of itself will give the fund some cash. It's actually in a negative cash position at this point as well. So this is probably the worst of the funds we'll talk about. It does need attention, and we're trying to do that at this point. Workers' compensation, or actually, this is the compensation insurance fund. It does address three things. It has the workers' compensation, which you're familiar with, and it also provides for the employee health services, the pared-down employee health services, as well as our safety functions. The budget you can see for this upcoming year has a slight increase. Overall, we have raised the rate slightly to the departments, but that's a very specific rate structure. Depends on the type of workers that you have, whether they're out in the field or if they're office workers. So there is a variety of different rates that we use to fund those. Again, like liability, this fund has a deficit. It was another management letter comment that the auditors brought to our attention. We are raising the rate in that approximately 10%, except for the general fund, which, again, we will address through a transfer this year for next year. With that, I'll invite Matt up, and he can address some of the operating aspects of this fund.
Good morning. Members of the council, I'll be addressing the compensation insurance fund. As Mr. Elliott said, that fund funds the three sections within HR of employee health services, workers' compensation, and safety. On the first slide, we're looking at employee health services and some of the challenges and future outlook there. As you know, it was approximately one year ago that the council gave direction to do an RFP and essentially reduce the budget in that area by closing our in-house clinic. Over the course of the last year, we did that RFP, and we've contracted with Glendale Venice Occupational Medicine Center, and they were able to come in and give us a good price for those services. The services began there in approximately October, November of 2009. And at this point, we're working to ensure that there's a relatively smooth transition to those services. Thus far, things have gone very well, and the two remaining members of what formerly was Employee Health Services are engaged in, first of all, managing that contract, but also making sure that the other elements of special exams and physicals and things that have to be done as part of our requirements under OSHA and ADA are conducted. So we're still trying to sort of assess the role for Employee Health Services, particularly as you look at the second bullet having to do with the wellness-related programs and those things that are more of a preventative nature, things that we like to do. And again, with two remaining staff, we're trying to do as many of those things as possible.
Matt, remind us of the annual budget savings that we accomplished with that shift.
Approximately $400,000 to $500,000. So it was significant, significant savings for staff as well as the rental of that facility and a minor reduction in MNO. And the reason for that is that we're now paying Glendale Venice to do those services. So our MNO went up a little bit, but the rest of the cost of that budget went way down. Few other things that Employee Health Services is focused on, and that is dealing with the H1N1 and other pandemics that impact the city. And these are issues that are going to come up on an annual basis. Earlier this year, when the H1N1 was a significant item in the media, we were able to obtain the vaccine at the Glendale Venice Clinic very early on and offer that to our employees. Nowadays, that vaccine is pretty standard, available at a lot of different pharmacies, so it's not that big of a deal anymore. But again, next year, there could be a whole nother pandemic out there, and it's always possible that we'll be having to ramp that up again. Additionally, the staff will continue to work on our ADA Fihaw compliance relative to our employees who either become disabled or have some significant work restrictions. This is a major element of what Employee Health Services does. We are under obligation by both state and federal law to try and accommodate employees who have work restrictions, and we deal with probably 25 to 30 of these cases per year. And in most cases, we're very successful in placing people elsewhere within the organization. very successful in placing people elsewhere within the organization. Additionally, to sort of wrap up Employee Health, our efforts will be just to continue to monitor state and federal regulations in the areas of OSHA, Department of Transportation Policy, ADA, Fair Employment and Housing, as well as the Family Medical Leave Act. There's always new laws coming into effect relative to employee health and how we need to apply those laws, and we try and stay on top of that. So with that, I'll move on to Workers' Compensation. If that's okay. The field of Workers' Compensation hasn't changed too much. Our objective will always be to provide appropriate care and process claims that occur on a timely basis and try and maintain our historically very low level of litigation. Some of the things that we're working on with regard to Workers' Compensation is just kind of on an ongoing basis evaluating the impact of current and future legislation on the administration of Workers' Compensation. We had a significant federal law passed this past year, the Medicare Secondary Payment Reporting Act, and it essentially required us to disallow any of our employees or retirees who are still, have an active claim going relative to Workers' Compensation, to disallow them from utilizing Medicare for those purposes. And really, this is an issue that will probably end up costing us more money, because it's forcing them back into the Workers' Compensation system. A lot of these employees would go through their Medicare medical situation and get what needed to be done, taken care of, sort of bypassing the bureaucracy typically associated with Workers' Compensation. So that's one big area that we're trying to deal with, and it could cause an increase in costs. We're also trying to assess any effect that the recently passed healthcare reform might have on the Workers' Compensation field. Additionally, we're looking at other ways of reducing costs. The litigation that we do see, we've done some benchmarking to see if there are ways that we can save money by handling more in-house by the Workers' Comp staff versus taking our, having our outside attorneys do a lot of the different functions. Some of the minor things, the filings and things like that, that are, that we think can be handled by internal staff, we're going to pursue that. We're also looking at utilization of a prescription drug program to lower cost to the cities. Currently, when an employee or claimant requires pharmacy care, they go to the pharmacy and essentially, either the city gets billed directly or the employee pays for it and we have to reimburse them. There are a lot of companies out there who will offer sort of a card, prescription card plan, much like you see in a typical benefit plan, and it makes it a lot more convenient for them, but it also, a lot of these plans have some savings built into them where discounts can be provided. And we truly think that we can find some savings at the city through this. And then in general, we're looking at ways to increase automation in this area. The past few years, the state, which administers the Workers' Compensation system, has been allowing the employers to participate in what they call an e-file system, where we can file all our documents with the Work Comp Appeals Board electronically, as opposed to making copies and mailing things off. I mention this because in the Workers' Comp field, the documentation can be voluminous between both litigation reports, medical reports. It's very easy to see a rather simple Workers' Comp file can be this thick in some cases. So anything that we can do in the automation area to reduce paper and reduce costs and mailings and things like that, we're going to be pursuing. With that, I'll be happy to move on away from Workers' Compensation. Questions?
Mike, just to tie back in the earlier discussion we had about the implications in Parks and Recreation of people who heretofore have been contract employees having to become, contractors having to become employees. Under the federal health program, we may then be obligated for either providing healthcare, a level of healthcare benefits, and/or paying the federal penalties if those people elect not to take the local program. Anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000 per employee annually. Take that and multiply it by what could be tens of people, maybe hundreds of people. If you look across all of the operations from parks to integrated waste and public works, there could be very large economic impacts there that we as yet haven't been able to sort through and haven't anticipated, but could be there. So this issue of the IRS's ruling on contractors versus employees could have significant economic implications for us as it relates to things like the federal program and coverage under our various health plans.
Members of the council, the third leg of the Compensation Insurance Fund is the Employee Safety. Again, much like Employee Health, very small staff. We have two employees assigned, our safety officer and a safety specialist, and it's their responsibility to really work proactively with all the city departments to ensure that workplace safety rules are enforced and make sure the workplace is appropriately safe and that we comply with all the state laws relative to Cal-OSHA. Some of the areas that we are working on really is to try and further push out the responsibility for safety back with the different departments. This is an ongoing goal, which relates to the first bullet, is to work with the departments on a comprehensive workplace inspection process. And it's, with two people doing this function, it's pretty well impossible for them to be at all places all the time, so we want to work with departments just to have regular inspections of their workplace. We're talking about the warehouses, the city yards, facilities, as well as our offices. The second bullet relates to process for conducting safety meetings and accident review committees in the departments that currently don't have them. This is something we've had in place for a long period of time with our big departments, GWP, Public Works, Fire, Police, but some of the smaller departments and some of the newly reconstituted departments as a result of the recent reorganization. We need to get that together and get these positions in place. The third bullet deals with the implementation of a new law, Cal-OSHA, on aerosol transmittable diseases. This was passed in 2009, and it essentially deals with any employees that are exposed to airborne diseases in sort of the public safety realm. So this deals mostly with police and fire, and there's a whole series of rules put in place to where we'd have to engage in decontamination procedures. We'd have to ensure the employees in these areas have personal protective equipment. There's exposure notification to other employees or all the employees in the area that are affected by that, as well as lots of written policies and procedures, which Cal-OSHA tends to require a lot of. Additionally, the second of the last bullet relates to automation of the DMV pull notice system. Our safety office administers the DMV pull notice system. And what that is, is when a, we keep track of all the employees who are required to have driver's licenses for their job, the operation of their jobs, and we're notified frequently when there's a restriction on a license or someone's license expires, and it's the responsibility of the safety office to work with the departments to follow up on that. The state's system for this is very, very antiquated, and they're making small improvements in that as far as getting the reports to us quicker. And to automate this would be a huge step in helping us get a lot quicker turnaround on these things. And the last bullet is sort of a general, ongoing goal of our safety office, and that is to go out and conduct comprehensive safety audits of areas where we do have higher-than-average accident or injury rates. Again, with a very small staff, it's hard to be all places at all times, but a lot of it just relates to education, working with our department to make sure that things are handled properly. With that, that pretty much covers the three areas within HR that deal with the Compensation Insurance. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'm thinking of calling a break, Mr. Starbuck.
Actually, five more minutes, we can wrap this up.
All right, let's do that.
Do you have lots of questions?
Yeah, no, it won't take long. Five more minutes.
I do have a question. That's regarding the Liability Insurance Fund. And when we go to our seminars, there's always a company there, I think it's called the Independent Cities Risk-
ICA. Independent Cities Risk Management Association, or Authority.
And they're always pitching the, you know, "Hey, Glendale, you guys are self-insured, la-la-la, why don't you join us?" So have we looked at the benefits of, basically as an insurance fund, of paying into that? Are we better off self-funding? Would any of these large losses that we suffered have been covered by such a fund had we been a member at the time? Have we done such an analysis?
It's actually a question for Bob and Legal as opposed to Matt.
He can answer it.
Typically, you do see smaller cities involved in these pooling organizations. We're a big city, so we have a bigger capacity to deal with the huge payouts, but as far as the-
There is a risk associated with pool, and, you know, typical of any insurance plan, if you pool and somebody receives a large risk, you're going to be on the hook for some of that. The advantage of not pooling or doing your own self-funding is that you can control more of your destiny. That's not to say you're not going to have any large losses like we did with the storms. But you can, if you're in a pool and you have a big, fairly big percentage of the pool, you can be hit for, you know, something that happens down in Laguna or, you know, depending on the city that's in that. And then we don't have a whole lot of control over what the results of how you address that loss. And so it's, there's pros and cons.
So that's entirely a self-funded pool, or is it a pool in which they go and purchase coverage from a carrier?
Yeah, you typically self-fund up to certain limits, and then you buy excess liability coverage at a threshold, whether it's $2 million or $5 million or $10 million, depending on, you know, how you want to structure the fund to operate.
And as I recall, they sold bonds in their early days in order to build enough capital to create a pool from which they could then pay any claims that might be forthcoming. So they self-insure to some level. I think they do utilize umbrella liability coverage beyond a certain significant level of self-insurance. We looked at this back when Bob Franz was here in the early days. When I came here, we were what's called bare on liability. We had no insurance coverage. And frankly, that concerned me and concerned Bob Franz when he came here. And frankly, at that point in time, we'd had very good experience, and folks here who'd been here for a long time said, "Well, we don't, we don't have any claims or losses. Why do we need to have insurance?" And frankly, at the time, we'd come through a period where liability insurance coverage was rather difficult and very expensive to get it, even if you could get it. We did look at the Independent Cities Group back then, and we also looked at the cost of buying our own umbrella liability coverage and concluded with what, with the experience we'd had at that point in time in our reserves, it made more sense just to purchase some liability coverage, umbrella coverage, to protect us. Now, since '05, and we got hit very hard in '05, I don't know exactly, well, we haven't been back to ask, I think it's IC, RMA, on how they'd rate us now with the condition of our insurance fund. I'm not sure that they'd be so open-armed as to-
We're probably a bad risk if they look at our loss experience, so.
The '05 storms and the hit there on our liability fund, I doubt that they'd view us very positively at this point, because we would be a very large risk for what is a pool made up of a whole lot of usually smaller and moderate-sized cities. But it's something we can certainly check and should check. I think first, though, we have to get our liability fund in a stable condition, which is frankly to find a way to fund those losses that occurred in '05 and get ourselves back to a positive basis again. That's our real challenge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the Dental Insurance Fund. Obviously, very simply, there's charges that go to the various departments and funds, and this fund purchases the dental insurance. With medical and vision, we had a composite rate increase of about 10% this year, which are actually a little bit less, but we budgeted an increase for 10%. I will note that the dental, vision, and medical insurance is all overseen by the Employee Benefits Committee, so there's a lot of input. Last year, we got a new broker, Keenan and Associates, that has done tremendous in terms of looking at how we can get better coverage for lower premiums. This year's premium, I think Matt came in at 13.5% was our initial pass. They got them down to just below 10 in terms of our increase. Still significant, but better than it was. And some of those challenges will obviously increase in rates. The General Fund, again, this is one of those components that we're proposing to do a transfer this year to cover next year's rate increase, to keep the pressure off the General Fund Departments. Medical insurance, the same, basically the same thing. We did have a slight increase this year. We're asking for an increase in the rate to the departments to cover the insurance Basically, the same challenges as the other medical, or the other insurance funds. Vision, same thing. We're looking at a 10% increase-
Hold on now. Have we looked at any potential impact from the new federal medical coverage, sir? It's not quite clear yet, but I'm just curious.
Members of the council, it's not clear at all, but what we're looking at is potentially increased costs, because some of the things that are part of that, and I wrote a few of them down, expansion of the dependent coverage up to age 26, that's an additional No longer can you exclude pre-existing conditions. There's elimination of the annual lifetime limits on certain claims. They eliminated rate pricing based on health status. These are all things that, when we were looking at our renewal this year in the medical area, that there was just so much uncertainty overall that, that we're fairly certain that that all contributed to increased costs.
Well, I assume by next year, I mean, one year from now, we should have a much better idea of where.
We should. Mr. Starbuck mentioned the coverage for employees that we currently aren't covering. That's an area that won't kick in until actually 2014, but it essentially would require all employers to cover those who work over 30 hours per week as to the insurance coverage. We do not for our current part-time employees, so.
From everything I've seen, if you've been able to keep your cost increases at or below 10%, you're doing very well in this arena. And Keenan, our new administrator, is, I think, has done a tremendous job, both in providing us with good information, keeping abreast of what's happening in the marketplace, as well as negotiating for our rates. Our counterpart in the district, I was listening to the budget presentation through the school boards just this week, they budgeted for a 10% and have been notified of a 20% rate increase in their employee health program. And they spend considerably more in that regard than we do. And they're now in the process of trying to negotiate that 20% proposed, down to a lesser figure, but they had budgeted 10, and now we're looking at considerably more, unless they can negotiate that down. So this is an area with a great deal of uncertainty on the horizon as to what our costs are going to be. The only given is it's going to be more. It's going to increase, probably at an increasing rate here before it stabilizes.
Lastly, in terms of the medical field, we have the Vision Fund. Obviously, it provides the vision coverage for the various groups that we have. Again, there, we're proposing any general fund rate increase. We'll handle with a transfer this year, and there'll be a percent increase to the operating departments. One of the Employee Benefits Funds, this is kind of a little-known, but financially significant. It's set up to accrue and record our vacation payouts upon separation. And for years, apparently, when we look back and looked at the history of it, it wasn't funded. The funding for that fund was not increased over- The funding for that fund was not increased over time to match the payouts, and thereby we now have a fairly sizable deficit to the tune of about $8 million. This was another one of the funds that was mentioned by the auditors in the management letter. We have raised the rate slightly for this coming year to stem the tide of the deficits, and we'll see how it goes. We'll, again, this will be something we revisit every year, and this is another one where we're proposing to do a transfer from the General Fund reserves for this to fund next year's increase. In the RHSP Fund, that's Retiree Health Savings Plan, this basically pays, or is a deposit to the Retiree Health Savings Plan that's administered by ICMA. When our employees separate in their contracts, they have a dollar per hour of value of their sick leave, and it's then deposited to ICMA. This fund has had not kept up with the payouts and some of the funding challenges we have. We do have a $7.3 million deficit in that fund, and this is the fourth of four funds, or four of these internal service funds that have significant benefits, or deficits, excuse me. So again, this is one where we raise the rates going into what we charge the departments for next year, and we'll, again, keep a close look on this for now and into the future to see how it works in terms of getting out of the hole we've dug ourselves. And the last fund is the Post-Employment Benefits Fund. Basically, that's, it's a very small fund. It was funded for a long time at a very small rate, and it had a, has a decent fund balance for what we pay out. So it basically pays for the insurance for deceased employees and their families in the line of duty. We've had, I believe, a police officer that was killed in the line of duty several years ago. His family still gets the insurance paid for through this fund. There's a charge to the funds through this, and it's not a lot of money, but it does provide a needed benefit. Again, it had a significant fund balance as of last year, so we're not looking at any increases, but the funding was not done for a while, just kind of bleeding down the fund balance, so we're going to put a little bit back in this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have on our plethora of internal service funds.
I have some questions, but my head says yes, but my stomach says no. I mean, my questions are on these funds. You know, there's, we're saying that, "Well, next year, we're going to hit up the General Fund reserves to pay for all this." You know, I have a problem in just saying that and not knowing what we're doing and how we're doing it. We've really resisted, we've resisted dipping into our general funds for many, many important issues in the community, capital projects, et cetera, and I hate to dip into that for essentially ongoing, you know, MNO, maintenance and operation-type expenses. And I think we need to have a little more in-depth discussion on that. Do we have another session planned? What I'd like to do is save this discussion, and I need some more information. We've got an $8 million, for instance, in that one fund, the Employee Benefit Funds, $8 million deficit, and we're saying, "Well, the General Fund will transfer to cover the rate increase," but we need to find out what we're talking about in that.
Let me give you, let me give you a little more information, maybe give you some, a little bit of ease on this issue, because we're not looking to the General Fund to be the source of resolving all of these issues with these internal service funds. Beyond the General Fund, every fund of the city, including the enterprise funds, are also going to have to be contributing. What we've developed is a 10-year program to make up these deficit positions in these funds, some of which, because we've generated savings in the General Fund last year and this year, to prepay a two-years, to prepay two years or prepay one year from the General Fund and the other enterprise funds that have fund balances adequate that they can make the contributions. The boost in those in internal service funds that don't have a positive cash position, because there's two ways of looking at these funds. One is, what is their fund balance on a balance sheet, which takes into consideration not only their current assets and current liabilities, but also for funds like the Workers' Compensation Fund, unincurred but reserved claims. So every time a case gets set up, somebody makes a decision, what's the worst case that that fund could, that case could affect this fund, and reserves are set up. You'll see that in the balance sheet as long-term liabilities, not current liabilities. So one of these funds can have a very positive cash position, but until all of those claims and, all of those claims are resolved in the future, you won't know what the true impact is. On the other hand, there's a fund like the liability fund that had a very positive position until the end of 2, until the end of 2007, 2008, because that's when the claims from the storms were finally resolved and we hadn't anticipated that outcome in court. So that hit us for the tune of almost $13 million as a result of the 2005 storms. The only fund on the hook for those costs is the General Fund. Now, we have some means of recovering those costs, the AIG, discussions currently, sale of the properties. And we had planned two or three years ago to make a $6.5 million transfer from the General Fund, but the year-end savings didn't come out adequate in the General Fund to do that. So with some of these funds, you have to look at both the cash position as well as the fund balance position, and most of these funds, with exception of liability, have a positive cash position, so there isn't, there isn't current urgency to address those. With respect to all of them, including liability to some extent, the General Fund isn't entirely on the hook, and we've looked at a 10-year program of increasing rates and making some contributions from all of the funds back into these to get their cash position in a better position, and then over time, address the deficiencies that are in the fund balance. And we'll bring you a more detailed report on that and the means we propose drawing on to do that. So they're not, they're not all relying on the General Fund to pull them back up again. And almost all of them will rely on commitments of increased rates to all of the funds over time in order to bring them back to a positive position again. And we'll bring you more detail on it. It is the only spot in probably our entire annual financial report picture that I would say we need to address, and we need to address fairly soon in terms of the cash position. I mean, everything else, in almost every respect, is in a very good condition, whether it's General Fund or our enterprise funds, are in very good, very good financial condition. This is an area, though, that we need to, need to address, and it is the only weakness we have, as I see it, in our entire financial picture. And we'll bring you back more details.
I mean, are we setting a precedent by dipping into the General Fund to cover the rate increases?
No, only to the extent the General Fund has obligations. Let's take workers' compensation. That will be distributed based on the amount of payroll. A lot of the enterprise funds have payrolls as well, special revenue funds have payroll, General Fund has payroll. So we're not proposing the General Fund pick up any more than its pro-rata share of these costs would be.
In a sense, Mr. Mayor, is what the strategy is, is we're basically going to prepay our rate increase for the General Fund through a transfer this year, which we'll plan to bring back to you at the third quarter update at the end of this month. So we'll have the detail of what all the different components of that is.
And only because you've had savings the last two years in the General Fund. You'll still be maintaining your General Fund reserve at or above your policy levels.
All right, well, my stomach is overriding my brain to continue questioning, so I'll reserve, I will reserve my right to. I think we all to comment on that and get into that at a later time.
Of course, of course.
Are there any questions on all those funds? Okay. Are we going to recess or adjourn?
No, you'll be, you'll be done for the day. We'll come back Thursday at 2:00, and we'll do all of GWP on Thursday afternoon.
Thursday, let me check my calendar.
Thursday is GWP, and then the following Tuesday, we take up your housing budget and your redevelopment agency budget, and then for the most part, you're done until you hold your public hearing.
Two to five. Okay. Okay, then.
Thank you for your attention.
If someone will make a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second. We are adjourned.